Yes.
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Yes.
Please pause for a minute of silence as we prepare for the meeting tonight. Julie Luther here, Dr. Huber.
Welcome, Abel Fidler from Stanley Elementary School, 4th grade student. Students, parents and guardians are Matthew and Whitley Fidler. Abel is a 4th grade student at Stanley Elementary. He is a very respectful and polite student who is always willing to help his peers. He comes to school each day eager to learn and inspires his peers. We are very proud to nominate Abel to have the honor to lead this meeting in the Pledge of Allegiance. He is reliable and works hard in school each and every day. Abel is friendly and makes sure all students feel welcome in our school. Outside of school, Abel is involved in AAU basketball, rec league basketball, and little league baseball. He loves to be outside playing sports with his animals. Welcome Abel and thank you.
I want you to step up to the mic right up your butt. Please stand for the pledge.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Abel, good job. Dr. Huber, do you have any agenda changes or additions?
I do not.
Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I make a motion we approve the agenda.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Alger and a second by Mr. Painter to approve the agenda.
Yes.
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 Madam Chairman, I would like to certify that Personnel Matters discussed in closed section were followed by Section 2.2-3711A12.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan Smoot and a second by Ms. Alger to certify Personnel Matters discussed in closed session.
Yes.
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 Yes. We have online comments that were reviewed. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Make a motion we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Alger, a second by Mr. Painter to approve the consent agenda.
Yes.
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 Yes. Dr. Huber, PCHS Volunteer of the Month. Ms. Judy Wilson?
Judy Wilson.
Oh, it's Stanley, it says PCHS. Sorry.
Welcome Judy, we're glad that you're here. We'll read a little bit about you, try not to embarrass you too. We are proud to recognize Judy Wilson as our Volunteer of the Month for her dedication to our student body. Judy consistently goes above and beyond by offering both time and heart to our students. She shows up to volunteer with a smile and offers encouragement to all. Her positive energy allows her to easily connect with students and in turn, students work hard for her. We are incredibly grateful for Judy's commitment, thank you for your service.
Internship Student Recognitions.
Ready? All right, we are very pleased to recognize more students this month. From Page High School Valencia, I'm sorry, Carina Valencia. Internship as an elementary ed at Shenandoah Elementary 5th grade. Again, from Page High, Evan Painter. Internship HVAC at Hawksville Home Comfort. All right, so. Ava Marshall from Page High, internship Physical Therapy at Apex Physical Therapy. Brooklyn Lamb. Internship with elementary ed at Shenandoah Elementary 1st grade. Page High, Gracie Good. Internship Veterinary Science at Rivers Bend Ranch. Emma Dean from Page High. Internship Veterinary Science at Blue Mountain Animal Clinic. And last from Page High, Jackson Burns. Internship Aviation at Elevate Avionics. Congratulations everybody.
And aviation.
Yeah.
He's the one, he does the musicals and the flights in fact too.
Yes. Sorry for the delay, we have Blu-ray's internship. All right, now for LuRay High School. Christina McLean. Internship Optometry at Valley Eye Clinic. From LuRay High School, Logan Fox. Internship Physical Therapy, LuRay High School Athletic Training. Again, from LuRay High, Piper Homan. Internship Dentistry at Dominion Dental. And from LuRay High School, Ariana Butler. Internship Information Technology at Vision Technology Group. Congratulations everybody, thank you for being here. Y'all have a great evening, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so our minutes from September 2026 posted for review. Ms. Miller, monthly financials.
Yes, good evening, school board members. You have been provided with the monthly financial report for September. Where Food Fund 1 expenditures are $3,984,047.76. Along with this, you have been provided with the local match calculation, which we have balanced with the Treasurers Office. Also wanted to note, at the bottom of the report, I've added a little bit more than what you typically would see. I have added a summary of expenditures by object code, just so that you could see the breakdown of expenditures by those categories for the month of September this year. And then at the bottom, compared to the month of September in fiscal year '25. And then also year-to-date for this year, as compared to last year. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Dr. Huber, budget calendar update?
Absolutely. Good evening, members of the board, audience, and those viewing online. Excited to announce our initial proposal for our 2627 Budget Calendar Presentation. And this is broken down, really, again, this is an informational item, so we're open to feedback from the board on this, whether that's tonight, or individually, or in small groups, moving forward. But looking first at our October through November timeline. Obviously, we are where we are tonight, with the budget calendar being presented to the school board as information. Really, the next kind of month and a half is really looking at staff input. And we've got a couple of different changes we're making to that. One of the big ones that I'm excited about is a community survey around our budget and their thoughts and their priorities for us as a school division, as well as staff input and principal and director input. Ms. Miller will be visiting each school, meeting with principals, talking about their priorities, and looking at what's needed moving forward. Analyzing our operational costs, of course, reviewing the ever-changing state and federal mandates, which we all know can be tricky sometimes. Looking at revenue forecasts, and again, as I said, the budget surveys and stakeholder priorities. At November 13th, we will bring the calendar back to you for action at our regular school board meeting. Currently, we have our, December 10th is our first budget work session at 5:00 PM, followed by our regular school board meeting at 6:30. And then we are hoping, which is always a moving target again, mid-December, our governor's budget being released.
So on the December.
Yep.
New supervisor, how do you plan it? Who's invited to that meeting? With the supervisor?
No, that's ours.
That's coming next. Yep, yes sir.
So how does that happen with our new school board?
So it's going to happen later. Once we do a reord, we're going to have to revisit this to make sure, you know, whatever changes through all of that process, that it still aligns with these dates and everybody's schedules. But we wanted to at least get it out there early, so we can all take a look. January, at our regular school board meeting, would be our public hearing. Again, taking a look at how our budget aligns with our strategic plan and our budget input coming up. January 22nd, I would provide an update on our FY '27 budget planning. You would continue to provide us direction as we prepare for adoption. And we've noted that we have an optional work session if needed. Just depending upon where we're at in the process, what information we have from the state. Moving forward. February, public hearing on the proposed budget. Final direction from the board to prepare the budget for adoption. And then on the 26th of February, I would provide you the superintendent's proposed budget, based upon all of those steps that happened prior to that February 26th date. So that's when you would expect for me to come with a formal presentation of what we're asking, what we're looking for. In March, we would hope, March 12th would be a budget approval. March 16th would be our Board of Supervisors meeting. And March 19th would be our work session, to your point, Mr. Painter, with the Board of Supervisors. Hopefully that answers your question. May, we would have Board of Supervisors County and School Budget Adoption. And then our final budget adoption would be May 14th, at our regular school board meeting. That's all depending upon board meeting dates and changes that may happen as new members come on, but we kind of followed what's already in place to come up with this. So, happy to take any questions, but again, this is informational. Ms. Miller and others have worked on this extensively. We have it in this PowerPoint format for you, but I believe you also have it in your packet, kind of in a more one-pager, line-by-line. We just thought maybe this slide deck would help kind of make it easier and readable for everybody.
On the community survey, I guess. Will the boosters be part of that, or are they just folks that are hired within the school system?
No, no, it'd be the whole community.
Whole community?
Yes.
Parents and.
Everybody. And that's what I'm typically used to, and then for staff, we would do the same thing within the schools. And then we try to theme out all of that information to pull out, kind of what are these prevailing things that people are talking about? And then we would look at it as a team and with you as a board, to make sure you were aware, you know, these were the top 10 things that people really talk about and give you that information broken down.
Yeah, I'd like Ms. Miller's breakdown of the percentages. I think that's something that probably ought to be added to that survey, whatever the. Whenever it goes out, kind of like this is where the percentages go. It's some good information. That makes sense?
Percentages of budget, when we budget, where they.
Yeah, like the salaries and the benefits.
Right.
Just so everybody knows, that's where most of our money goes.
That's right.
Everybody thinks it's everything else, it's really.
Right.
Couple of big buckets and then we got that little stuff got to buy.
And it'll be a pretty wide-open survey, you know, not a lot of multiple choice, but just, you know, here's some categories we're looking at, tell us your thoughts. Good?
Thank you.
Yes, absolutely.
Ms. Webb, Stanley, on my first school presentation.
Good evening, Dr. Huber, and members of the board. I'm Anita Webb and this is.
Lee Brine.
My AP, and so we're very excited to present information on Stanley to you, so thank you for having us here. Our theme this year is Stanley Grows Tomorrow's Learners. So we're excited about that, that's been the theme this year. Some of the celebrations I wanted to bring to your attention. Our back-to-school orientation was a great success. We had 330 out of 338 students attend the event with their families. Really, really excited about that. Our CCLC program continues to grow each year and has been a wonderful addition to Stanley Elementary. Our two leaders that own that do a great job, and it's really been a great connection for us. We've, members of the school across all areas have received a large number of RDA awards, so that's positive. They're getting positive feedback. And I just want to celebrate the quality of instruction and collaboration between faculty, staff, and students at Stanley Elementary. Our areas of focus this year are based on what we know from just knowing our data so well, we don't have official state data, but we know our data. So we're going to continue to focus on increasing our reading SOL scores with a particular focus on economically disadvantaged students and students with special needs. We're going to continue to increase our Math SOL scores with a particular focus on 3rd grade. And then continue to decrease chronic absenteeism. So, our instructional data looks a little bit different this year, as you know. They came up with the new accreditation system in the state of Virginia. And the official reports have not come out yet, it's much later than it ever has been before. So we had to look at different kind of data. It's going to be very different than what you've seen before, this is just raw data, it doesn't account for anything, so I just want to let you know that, that that's why it looks like that. And so I noted that data is derived from our CIP raw scores. This does not include the new state model for accreditation, so they had a whole point system, there's growth, all those factors feed in. These scores don't represent that. So for the 2425 CIP results, 3rd grade reading was 41.67%. 4th grade was 54.17%, and 5th grade was 72.13%. Gives us an overall combination percentage of 56%. Now, that is much lower than what we ended the year, last year with. But again, I can't tell you how we ended last year because we haven't been provided the data, so. I don't want to scare you, I just don't want to scare you that bad. Takeaways from what we learned with this data that we have. Extra support is needed in 3rd grade and 4th grades to increase reading scores. Our instructional coach is planning with the teams. We are focusing on implementing the Virginia Literacy Act with fidelity and use of an assistant to provide targeted small group instruction in ELA. This year, we did a different model with one of our assistants that is very targeted and very specific, and she's working with kids specifically on reading. So that's a little difference for that. Okay, for math. 3rd grade ended last year 50% at the raw score, 4th grade was 65.31, and 5th grade was 72.13, which gives us a combined percentage of 62%. Again, we noted that extra support is needed in 3rd grade to increase math scores. The instructional coach is planning with them. I think it got erased somehow, but it was new kid on math instruction, is what that new is. And use of an assistant to provide targeted small group instruction in ELA. If you ever come to any of our data meetings and attend that, which you're more than welcome to. We are very, very specific with our data. We don't talk about, like, these kids are meeting their standard, these kids are below anymore. It's none of that, it's like, here is the standard, what are they missing? What part of the standard are they missing and what are we going to do to target it? So it's very specific and very strategic. So that was math. Science, raw data is 70.49%. We, takeaways was allotting time in the master schedule helped support 5th grade science score. There have been years before where science has tried to be integrated into the ELA block or blended. And we found that it is important for us to have a specific science block. It's not very long, it's a half an hour a day, but it's still geared specifically towards science. And then we also see the value of hands-on activities in science as part of the instruction. And we have a STEM lab that's available for all grade levels at our school. History, we ended at 69%. The takeaways, over the summer, the teacher created her own SGAs to align with the new standards, because standards, new standards came out. And the goal is to meet the standard and then increase the status score to 70%.
All right, so we're going to go to more part of Stanley, so we're going to look at chronic absenteeism efforts and support for Stanley. We do make daily phone calls every day to verify why they're not there, to try to make that contact in addition to phone calls by the system. We also have plans to monitor the students, we have a spreadsheet where myself and our attendance clerk are taking the tab and making sure that we're looking at when they're absent, how often they're absent, and why they're absent. Are doctors for notice being provided or not being provided? And if so, we are in close contact with the family. And I'll reach out to initiate a meeting to develop an attendance plan. We document that as well, it's part of our plan, keeping track of absenteeism. We give attendance awards weekly, monthly, and quarterly. So weekly, the kids can fill in a slice of pizza, we announce their names at the end of the week. They're given daily, not daily, but end of the week snacks as a celebration. We also do monthly spins where they can get our attendance awards, big, big prizes in this big old case. So we definitely have kids that walk through the hall and go, I'm going to be here because I want that prize right there. So that is part of the monthly spin for pre-fated 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5. We also have attendance awards that are quarterly, coupons, certificates, more celebrations, announcements, things like that. We also have our after-school tuning program, CCLC is wonderful. It helps us to support our students who are not necessarily in school, but if they are on an attendance plan, likely we'll ask them to also be a part of CCLC to make up those times when they are not in school. We still have the academic time in addition to enrichment time that CCLC provides. So again, we're still seeing the results of all our efforts. But the good thing about having CCLC, we have our two facilitators who disaggregated some data and looked at those 32 students who participated in CCLC and made up by looking at the hours they used with CCLC. And we made up 651.25 hours, just based on CCLC, in addition to the school. So chronic absenteeism, absentee implied, we are now at 0.058%. They have five or more absences, absentee views, absentee views are absentee. We really want our kids in the school, we want to extend their learning after school time with celebrations of success, encourage them to come on field trips. They can go to explore more museums, they can go to the June Camp True Park. And other activities are a true extension of what they're learning in class. And again, part of getting the kids to come to schools, getting them excited about being in school, attending, getting celebrated, getting bragging rights, attendance prizes, and PBS celebrations that we do. We do have a newsletter that goes out monthly that encourages getting kids to school, having parents be aware of the policies for PCPS when it comes to chronic absenteeism, and what happens when they show up weekly, monthly, and quarterly. Family engagement is very important to Stanley, again, we have the CCLC program. We have a literacy night that's happening October 14th with a theme that we'll see a little bit later. In November, we're going to have a Veterans Day Assembly where we bring veterans in, they usually speak. It's a whole celebration and assembly that's really wonderful. At back-to-school, we had a lemonade bar, so that's a reason to get people in the building, but also to have a little refresher, they're able to make their own lemonade if they didn't want just plain lemonade. They had berries, they had drinks that spiced it up, they want strawberry, blueberries, just to make it fun and festive, so they can just meander around the school, be their teachers, and have some more lemonade as they. We also have a lot of PTO events that are coming up. We have a very active PTO, so any major holiday, they will jump right in. We have Boo Bash coming up, we'll have Winter Fest coming up. And along the way, they will plan other activities to get our kids really excited and get people to come after school hours and also enjoy the time they are within the school building. We also do character count breakfasts, we celebrate a character of the month every month. So on Friday, we'll go ahead and have a breakfast for families and students, they'll come in. We'll announce their awards, they'll come in and have that breakfast, and then they also can sign out yard signs to put on their yard. So that whole month, they are the character of the month that demonstrate the quality of that month. And again, we'll still have concerts that will come out throughout the year. We are definitely partnering with other outreach programs. We are definitely partnering with other outreach programs. JMU has offered counseling for us. So we have on Fridays, a big feelings group that takes some of our kids that we identify as having these big feelings. They'll do about four sessions of that on Fridays. And we also partner with Choices. So there is going to be Choices coming into our schools Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. They'll partner with a PK through 2 classroom and provide counseling with a curriculum for 30 minutes during that morning meeting. So these are pictures of our character for breakfast, PTO events, awards, and also some of our community and school engagement. All these concerts. Anytime you put kids on stage, people show up. On the 14th, we have our family engagement night with our masked reader. At that event, we're going to invite families in. We have a lot of already people signing up. We have almost 200 at least. And we're not there yet. So they'll come in with their folks. We'll have a table of free books for them to take. We'll have a masked reader on stage that's going to read the book. It's going to be Rabbit Hill, so they're going to enjoy the program. And afterwards, they can, on their way out, take a copy of the book for family to take with them. And we'll also read it within the school.
And throughout the year, we're going to read chapters. They'll still be able to get to that chapter.
There's our school dance that was sponsored by the PTO that was after school. Neon music, all the things. The kids are super happy about that. That's a picture of our lemonade bar that came with our open house. And we do partner up with blockies for any sort of math challenge, and the kids do like their ice cream.
All right, so Stanley Elementary truly does grow tomorrow's bloomers. Our focus is to meet the needs of students, including academic, social, emotional, and character. The staff at Stanley Elementary needs to be recognized for their dedication, their kindness, and perseverance through all the demands, challenges, and expectations of public education. We all rode a boat together and work hard to make Stanley Elementary a great place to grow.
Thank you. Very nice. Yes.
Great job.
Any questions?
I have some questions. So first off, thank you for getting me in there. Big feelings. I like that. I know culture is what they go through in that area a lot. I think you guys had only two teachers leave last year. Is that right?
One retired and one took care of her for overly that.
Yeah, so they would have stayed if they didn't have to. Do you have all your physicians field at your school?
Currently, yes, we do.
You do? And I'm going to put you on the spot. What do you need?
Our biggest, again, we care about human resources. You know, I had gotten four kindergarten teachers for the lower grade level, and that was really good last year. And then we had shortages across the division, which we understood. So somebody went and took the position to fill a position there. But I still would like to see smaller classrooms at the lower grade level. It's such a huge impact for the kids. That the amount of Aces that kids come into the schools with these days, the lack of exposure to preschool, exposure to drugs, things like that, impacts their ability to learn because we have smaller classrooms. It's a lot easier to really help those kids and teach them how to read and get their foundational skills really strong if I could have four teachers at each grade level. I mean, that's just what I believe in. So really, few needs.
And you believe that for like kindergarten first and second?
Definitely, yeah. Yeah, I mean, it's not that I don't wish I could have at a average grade level, but if I'm going to prioritize it, I definitely want it in the lower grades. That is very foundational. And it was amazing watching what the kindergarten teachers were able to do and accomplish last year by having 10 kids in the class versus the year before when they had each tarred 20 kindergarten. And first grade suffered last year having 10 kids in the class. This year, we were able to have, we just moved somebody from fifth grade down to second grade. We didn't get a new teacher, but we have four in second grade to kind of help that out. Because there's no way we could continue to go on.
So last year was your first year of having four K students. Okay, so I'll be curious what happens in two years on that third grade SOL.
Those kids are looking really good. So those kindergartners who went to first grade, we went to our ELA data meeting. We looked at the standards. We looked at who was tier 1, tier 2, tier 3, and how many actual student reading plans were worked. They were not very many. And I think that's the result of some really good foundational skills that were being taught. So there's very little in that grade as a result of those foundational skills and also teaching how to be in school, how to get along with people, and also the rigor of what kindergarten looks like.
That's good information to share. Something to say. You do, yeah. Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good.
Good evening.
Thank you.
Dr. Aldison, instructional update?
Yes, thank you. Actually, that was a great segue into our conversation of the instructional update. If you would have told me in August that we would get to the October board meeting and not be able to provide you with final results on accountability, I would have told you you're crazy. You must be crazy. So the, as Anita had mentioned, as Webb had mentioned, that the, we have not received the final calculations. And it is different than what it used to be, right? So years ago, I mean, it was basically how many? Take the number of kids who took the test, how many kids passed it, that's your percentage. It's become more complicated than that. So there's mastery, depending on the level, it is different at the elementary, middle, and high. There's different percentages, but there's a mastery level, which is just that number that I was talking about, number of kids took the test, number of kids passed it. There's that piece. Then there's growth, so there's calculation for kids that have how much growth, wherever they are on the continuum, right? Whether they were very low and they grew, or if you were an average student and you went past advanced or so on and so forth. So that's all taken into consideration. And there's something called readiness, which again, is somehow, is somewhat different at the different levels, but all of them have some element of chronic absenteeism. At high school, there's also kind of the three E's of employment, enlistment, and into higher. So they have a calculation. So anyway, all that to be said, we do anticipate that we'll have that information for the board. You don't have a second meeting in October, right? So it would be publicly shared in November. Certainly, you'd have that right away. Anyway, I wanted to mention that because the information that at the elementary and middle school level is not available, so she wasn't able to show some of that information. High school level is a little easier because there's not a growth component at the high school, right? So Mr. Kahle was able to share some of that information, but I just want to clarify some of those. And what she did share there, the CIP, is helpful information. It can be helpful as we diagnose areas that we need to work on, but it doesn't necessarily, it's not an apples-to-apples correlation with the SOLs. Just wanted to clarify some of that. All right, so before I get started with the update, which is really going to be around the plans the schools are creating to address issues with student performance, I wanted to just highlight an item, some information about school visits. So from the very beginning of the year, Dr. Huber had mentioned to the instructional staff, central office staff, the importance of being in schools. So I asked all of the instructional staff to keep track of the visits they make to schools so that we have that. It's running. I think he's been sharing some of that information with you at different times. So to date, we've had 177 visits, just separate visits to schools from the instructional staff. So continue to calculate that, and that's important for schools to see central office staff there. In fact, one of the things that was asked at the principal's meeting yesterday about, you know, what Dr. Huber had done, asked what to start and stop, and what was?
Continue.
Continue. There we go. And that was a continue, right? It was mentioned, she mentioned about continuing the presence of central office staff in the building. So I wanted to share that. So we're going to talk about the instructional update related to school improvement plans, right? So you'll see here, the state of Virginia requires that every school has, this is the state of equality, every school has to have a school improvement plan. So that's something that, across the Commonwealth, every school has to have one of these, right? So they don't, they do give sort of a template of what you could use, but you're not required to use that specific template. The template that I'll be sharing, if you want to have copies of the template, that is something that is a bit new to PAGE this year, but it's similar to what the state version is, but it's customized just a bit. So you also see in the next slide, for elementary schools in PAGE, they are also Title I schools. So there's this element that happens sometimes where you have a school improvement plan that is required by the state, and then Title I is federal money, and they require a plan. And many school divisions actually have two plans, right? And no one can have two masters and serve each one effectively, right? So we've combined those two together. So the elements that are required in the Title I plan are included in the CSIP. That's one of the reasons why we don't necessarily use the state's version exactly, right? So those two things are combined, and then we have them together, and then we only have one plan, right? So schools don't have to be, are we following the Title I plan? Are we following the CSIP, which is a continuous school improvement plan, that's what I'm saying for? So they're all combined. So that is something that's new this year that we've combined. Next slide. It's, okay. So the next slide, we'll do it this way, old school. So this is called the school improvement cycle. This is a version of the, of a improvement cycle that people are maybe familiar with, right? So this is idea that you're going to prepare. You work at, kind of what is it that we want to be focusing on? And how do we get ready for that? Then we actually put in interventions, and we measure and see how well kids are doing. We get feedback on that. We provide support where we need to do it, where we need to provide support. We reflect on that, and then we make adjustments, right? So it's a very, this isn't a complicated system, right? But it is something that I want to highlight as we go through the process here. So in order to prepare, we, each school, in fact, Dr. Johnson, could you pass these out? So what I'm handing out to you is just the template that I talked about. So this doesn't have, every school receive one of these. There's a different one that's for elementary, slightly different, elementary, middle, and high. Part of the reason is because only our elementary schools are Title I. So there's elements of that plan that need to be included in the, in the plan that don't need to be at the middle and high school. So you'll see the next page is the place for the school to put who the members of the team are that would be putting together the school improvement plan. And then you're going to conduct a needs assessment. So what you'll notice is the next several pages, there's just information, student performance information, reading levels, SOL tests, information that tells us what are the areas of strength and relative weakness, right? Now, what I will say is that these things, principals don't have to put them on a sheet of paper to know. Right? So it's helpful to have it here. You're all looking at it together, depending on who's at the table. It can be the group, you know, that we're listing as being on the improvement team. It is helpful for them to, sometimes they may not know the data at all the different levels, right? So it's helpful to be there, but it also provides us with some information around what are the areas that we need to be focusing on in our plan. Okay, so that's the needs assessment, and then you're going to be setting goals. So you'll see on, I don't know, maybe the fifth, sixth page, you'll see there are going to be, the beginning, there's two different strands. There's a teaching for learning goal, and then a little bit later, there'll be what's called a school environment goal, right? So these will be goals that will be related to the areas of focus for that school. And in a moment, I'll share some kind of sample goals. In fact, one from Stanley Elementary School. I'll share kind of what one of their goals is for the year. What you'll see here across this column or the table there is the areas in which they, the principal and the team will be filling out. I'm not going to go over all of them, but I will highlight a few, like this on page six. So action steps, first of all, you'll have the SMART goal or the area that they're trying to focus on, right? What the goal is. And again, you'll see that in a moment. In fact, before we go to the next page, we talked about needs assessment. Go to the next one. Yeah, so here's an example of a couple of the goals that would be there. So a teaching and learning goal, should be teaching for learning, excuse me, but by 2026, Stanley Elementary School will increase reading scores from economically, the economically disadvantaged group from 45 to 75% or more on the Virginia SOLs, right? So that would be an example of a goal that they have in their plan, right? And then I'll talk about the school environment goal in a moment. Did you have the goal that's there? Then you have, what are the action steps? What are the things that you're going to do to meet that goal? Who's responsible for it? When will it be done? And then the evidence of progress, and this is the thing that I would say is the most important column, is the evidence of progress. I think most, anyone who's been in central office administration has seen really elaborate plans, could be voluminous plans, right? They have all sorts of stuff in it, and it doesn't actually ever get done, right? So the thing that is the most important is whether they actually do what they say, right? I've heard it said one time, it says, "The 20-minute walk that you go on is better than the four-mile run that you don't go on," right? So this is to say, what are you actually doing? So we provide this to them in a Google Doc format, and then we ask them to put evidence, so anything that supports that action step gets linked into that column so that it is accessible by myself and other members of the instructional team, so that we can go in and we can see that. And we'll also talk about other follow-up that we do in person with them, right? So that's what I would say is the most important part of this plan, is that that's there. There's evidence people have shown that they are actually doing what they set in. The next strand there is again, the school environment goal. And these are, by the way, these, this terminology about teaching for learning and also the school environment, those are Title I requirements. That's part of the element too, that you have to have these two types of goals into a Title I plan. So you can see here, this was actually from Shenandoah Elementary School. By June 2026, stakeholder perception of student safety and emotional well-being will improve by 20% as measured by student, staff, and parent surveys through implementation of zones of regulation, counseling supports, and consistent school-wide behavior practices. So that's an example of that. And then the same, they would fill out the same thing, action steps, who's responsible, and evidence of data. So monitor, feedback, support. School staff collects and evaluates student performance data. This could be in the form of BOWls, iXL, which is a software that we use to evaluate particularly math. And then CIP benchmark data that happens each quarter. Students take these assessments based on pacing guides, and then we can evaluate whether they've actually learned the material, right? And if they haven't, then we can go back and we can, right? So division instructional team regularly visits schools to review data, provide feedback, and offer support. We have our first visit starting tomorrow. So tomorrow at 10 o'clock, we'll be at Shenandoah Elementary School to review their plan with them, start looking at data, and just kind of talk through their plan. And then at 1 o'clock, we're going to stay in the elementary school to look at their plan and walk through that. So we'll do that regularly. Some of that, the frequency will in some ways depend on when we get our accreditation or the accountability data. Some of that, the, the frequency will in some ways depend on when we get our accreditation or the accountability data. If schools are in improvement, we will meet with them once a month, and if they're not in improvement, then it typically isn't every other month. School staff reflects on student progress and adjusts instruction and interventions as necessary. You repeat the process, right? So this would go through this throughout the year. The importance, the important factor here is having data that actually can be instructed, right? So having the benchmark data, having iXL data, being able to work through it, particularly in the elementary schools, reading data, where are kids at? What are the interventions? Ms. Webb had talked about the data meetings that they have, they look at student data, reading data in particular, and say, where are kids weak, where they're strong? That's how you're going to be making changes. School improvement is a team effort, right? So we talked about this with principals. It, the hardest job in the division, short of the superintendent, is being a principal. I've been in a lot of different positions in, in in school systems, and that's been my observation. It is a hard job, and the job of the central office staff is to provide support to principals, right? And we don't want them to feel like they're on their own. We talked about when we go to these meetings to meet with them, it is not a matter of them feeling like they need to put on a dog and pony show for us, right? It is a matter of saying, what is it, what is the, what's the real deal here, right? What, what are we dealing with? Said, we'd rather have you tell us in October, we're really struggling here. I'm really worried about this. I think this is going to be a problem. I suppose saying, everything's great. And then all of a sudden in April, they're like, you know, actually, it's not good, right? So we can't help if we don't know as soon as possible. So it's a team effort. It's something that will try to stay available and and support them in a way. Any questions?
I think it's great support, and the visits are awesome, and that helps you get in the moment information, and just with, with I'd be curious sometime, if you think this is Webb's, Webb's idea of smaller class sizes, K through two?
I'm all for them.
I'm sure you are.
Now, so this is what I would say. I mean, it is the research has shown, it does, it does help, right? But you have to look and see it, what, at what level does, like, how low can you go? Right? So it doesn't work exponentially. It's like, it's not like that, that to twenty-four to eighteen, what's that difference versus eighteen to fifteen, versus fifteen to twelve, or so? So those don't all have the same amount of impact, right? So you have to look at it and see twenty-one in a first grade classroom, I think she mentioned that, that's too many. You shouldn't have that in a first grade classroom, right? But I think there was a mention about having ten in a kindergarten classroom. You don't need ten in a classroom either. Right? That, that's, you could be, your growth, I'm sorry, but that's the way it is, right? I mean, being at, say, fifteen and ten, well, you won't have that much of a difference, right?
As long as each kid, they're not all the same.
I could put ten in your class and you could keep track of that. I mean, say, and I could, and I could put, I could put twenty in a class that are going to be perfectly fine.
They'd be walking around the school all the time, wearing them out.
Yeah, right. That's right. So, so it matters. What I would say is that that is something, it, it shouldn't just be a how low can we get, right? It has to be thought through, where's that sweet spot? Where do you get the best bang for your buck?
Because in two years, if she shows that third grade SOL is going way up, she's proving something.
She's on the way to prove.
On the way to.
On the way to. Yeah, 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 right, exactly.
Good evening, board. I come before you this morning with additional informational items for policies. Nine policies that we reviewed, most have no, no changes. We did do some minor wording modifications and did combine some policies that V S B A has updated. So we've combined them on our side as well, and we'll be removing others. Are there any questions about that?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Hoover, superintendent, something?
Absolutely. Good evening again, everyone. I have a very brief update for you this evening, just to highlight a few things. So I love this picture, by the way. This, I think, was from our last board meeting, or maybe the one before of our students out here. But up to date, actually, that number's already low prior to coming in. We're over four hundred recognitions. So I'm going to have to learn how to write left-handed as I sign all those certificates, but it's a great thing. And not only are teachers and colleagues nominating each other, but parents are nominating our staff and kids are nominating our staff. And I think that's been really positive, and I've had some good conversations in my stop-start-continue meetings this week, just about how impactful these, these things are. And so that's just an update on where we are at with that, and that will continue to be, to be part of what we do. So I'm excited about that, and hopefully, as a school division, we're proud of that as well. Just enrollment update as normal. We are pretty much holding strong to where we were the last time we met. We are definitely better than we were at this time last year in FY twenty-five. We're hovering right around what we budgeted for, for eight AM, which is a good thing. And we'll know a little bit more, again, as I've talked about, meeting after meeting as we go, but that gives me comfort to know that we're, we're right there. So just wanted to make sure you all knew that as a board, especially as we combine that conversation with the budget calendar conversation, this continues to be really, really important to make sure we're watching. So I just wanted to get that to you. You'll notice that picture there on the right. It's funny, I laughed when Ms. Webb presented, she actually used the same picture.
She did.
In her slide, and I had no idea. But we're excited about that, and that's a good thing. Just want to remind everybody that October is V S B A bullying awareness month. We talked about this at our principals' meeting this week. Our counselors and Ms. Heischman as well have been preparing different activities at different grade levels for our, for our kids. And it's just a reminder, and I think it's very important, especially this evening, that we think about that and not just bullying awareness, but being kind, taking care of each other as a community, as a school community, as students, as staff, you know, and it doesn't just need to happen in October, it needs to happen three sixty-five. So we, you will be seeing some things come out on social media that we're doing. But it's just a reminder, you know, of how damaging bullying can be, number one, but how critical it is. You know, kids can't learn if they don't feel safe, and they don't feel wanted, and they don't feel part of something. And so you'll be seeing a lot going on there, and I hope, you know, we continue to do those things. So excuse me, just wanted to remind everybody that that is an important month for us and across the Commonwealth. Hundred-day plan update. We've been busy. So stop-start-continue meetings, finished round one at Shenandoah and the Tech Center this week, actually. Great discussions and dialogue. I think it helps when you bring donuts and coffee and cookies sometimes. But it's been so refreshing to, to talk with teachers and staff in these conversations and just listening. And it's not just things that aren't going well. There's things that are really going well that they want us to hear about. And so I had a great time at Shenandoah. Spent about a half a day there, and then wrapped up our principals' meeting with another hour and a half at the Tech Center. And just things that you don't think about unless you sit down and have a conversation with somebody, because you don't see it from their lens until you give them the opportunity to talk and listen. So I've enjoyed it so much. Hopefully, we'll, we'll continue that in the second semester. So just wanted to give you an update there. Foundation meeting last night was successful. As far as the school division is concerned, we gave an update on CIP and the RRMM work that is going on and the visits to the buildings. Just the foundation was aware of that Tech Center is certainly included in that and all of that programming, and more to come. Hopefully, as the months go on, had a discussion about the welding program and next steps, which I think was well received. Budget update, just, I kind of shared a brief overview, not what I gave you all this evening, but just kind of where we're headed, so they, they know what to expect as a foundation in terms of our budget development. Updated them on my meetings with staff actually earlier in the day, and talked about future programming options that had different interests. Karasalas, just wanted to provide an update on where we're at with that. Hopefully, you can see most of that okay. Just up to this point in the year, eight total cases, three hundred and sixty-one communications, four appointments and seventeen searches. And then it talks about the mental health areas that are being addressed at the highest rates. At the top is anxiety, number two, depression, trauma, ADHD, suicide, and all the way down to eating disorders at the bottom. Time saved is, I believe, in communication is over five hundred minutes for our staff. So that continues to be a great tool, and as different things pop up throughout the year, this is a great resource that we can give to folks who are going through different things, and we continue to do that as a staff and meetings. So just wanted to let you know that that service is continuing to do us well here in Peach County. Exciting news, really excited about this. So team mental health first aid, we now, as of yesterday, I believe, have three school counselors and Mrs. Heischman certified as team mental health first aid facilitators. There's also someone else in the room that is certified as of yesterday. Congratulations.
Phenomenal curriculum. I'm very excited.
So Casey texted me yesterday afternoon, and I told her that I was going to let you all know how proud I am. That was a lot of training from, from what
Yeah, Monday through Wednesday, nine to five, and then we have present and be graded and get a pass.
So that's a fantastic opportunity that we got to send some folks through, and she's planning to pull the team back together to implement the course for students. So it's another testament to all of our folks coming together to row the boat and making sure we provide all of those services for our students. So brief update, but just wanted to kind of give you a few things that we've been up to and celebrate some things as well. So questions for me?
Keep up the good work. Good stuff.
Thank you.
Ms. Miller, approval of claims.
Yes, thank you again, board members. You have been provided with a claim certification where Fund One operating fund expenditures were two hundred and fifty-eight thousand, four hundred and ninety-nine dollars and sixty-two cents. Fund Five school food service, sixty-nine thousand, seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars and twelve cents. And total expenditures are three hundred and twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and sixty-seven dollars and seventy-four cents. Along with this, you have been provided with the list of claims and check registers. If you have any questions, I will be happy to answer.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we accept the claims as presented.
Yes.
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 Over ten thousand?
Yes, we have one purchase order over ten thousand dollars for your consideration this evening. This is for Valley Automation for Security Camera additions for Larray Elementary and Stanley Elementary Schools, and this will be paid for by a security grant that we were just recently awarded.
Make a motion, we approve the purchase orders over ten thousand.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Alder, second by Ms. Bryant, approve the purchase order over ten thousand?
Yes.
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 Thank you.
Mr. Bell, items for auction?
Good evening, board members. The last meeting I presented for, as an informational item, our request to auction additional vehicles. So tonight, I'm asking for your approval, and I'll answer any questions you might have.
I make a motion, we approve the items for auction.
Second by Ms. Bryant, approve the items for auction, any questions?
Yes.
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 Thank you.
Ms. Miller, V S B A policy update?
Good evening, board. We bring back before you the policies from the last meeting for your approval. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
I make a motion, we approve the V S B A policy update. Thank you.
Motion by Ms. Alder, second by Ms. Bryant, approve the V S B A policy update?
Yes.
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 Thank you.
Under discussion?
I'm going to jump in here first because I am so excited to know that we are providing internships for our students. What a wonderful learning experience, and it gives them a concept of, hey, I would really like to do this, or no, this isn't for me. And what a better time to learn that now than to, whether you're going into a trade or into college or whatever, you got to declare something, and then you get up in a couple of years, and you go, huh, I don't want to do this. Thank whoever is responsible for getting this, and I just hope it grows like crazy. Because that is, I can't say enough, and I'm just very pleased that we're making that possibility. So, very good.
I completely agree. I love the internship program, and congratulations to all the students, and I'm glad that they came out so we could celebrate them. And a big thank you to the partnership of the community for bringing these students out. That is how we build the community, and that's, that's fantastic to get behind these students. And another shout out to Ms. Wilson at Stanley Elementary for volunteer of the month. We really appreciate all those people willing to show up. It's, it's a support, I know, to the staff and to the children to see those smiley faces. It's, it's a good feeling. Also, at Stanley, three hundred and thirty students and families out of three hundred and thirty-eight, that's huge. That, that was the best thing I've heard all day. Good stuff. I hope that they continue to make that happen. And on the other visits, one hundred and seventy-seven visits, and for all that's getting into the buildings. Thank you, thank you. That is, it is building confidence and boosting morale and showing support, and that is, that then just goes into our students. So really grateful for all of that, and thank you for the Row the Boat certificate. I think that that is fantastic, too. That keeps, it's, it's nice to highlight all these. There are so many great things that happen with our staff, and we miss them. And I love seeing them. I love seeing them posted, and that we get to celebrate. That's an exciting thing to see. And I think that that wraps it up for me right now. Thank you, guys, for your hard work. Remember kindness always. This is bull, the bullying month and domestic violence, and so, you know, let's remember to be kind.
Yeah, a lot, a lot of positives are on. I hear nothing but good things mostly out of the schools, and good things out of Peach County Middle School today. Did my first mentorship with a few students. I think we have several new mentors up there as well, so that's seeded in, this new way they're going to evaluate it to see how successful.
to see how successful it is. Nothing's going to be good. Visits and everything you guys are doing, it's, it's awesome. I think it's really builds community again. And while all this good stuff goes on, we've had too many heavy things happen. And I'm sorry that you've got to start your tenure here in a lot of these ways. And they call it the upper limit diagram, upper limit problem. And when you're ready to make a personal breakthrough or organizational breakthrough, there's a line there, you know? It's like the, they took a jar, a mason jar one time and put a bunch of fleas in it and put a cover on the top of the lid. And those fleas kept jumping up and hitting their head and would never exit the jar. And they took the lid off the jar and those fleas continued to jump the same exact level. Never flew. There comes a time when it's that upper limit, and I'm going to send it to you, look at it, don't mind. And there's a thing of when you get close to this upper limit and breaking through, which I think our school division's ready to do. But there's a thing on the other side of it called self-sabotage, that if you continue to make that same thing self-sabotage, you go back and have to start that process all over. And I think there's some folks that are sabotaging. And I don't think it's on purpose. I think it's just part of the makeup of them. And I'll just tell you, for instance, like my wife, I want to have a better relationship with my wife, but I cannot keep on picking up my phone while she's talking and looking at it. I'm sabotaging myself, right? And I get to go back down where she's mad at me. And I get to do it back up, and I look at my phone again. I'm going back and forth. I think that's really what's, some things are happening. I think everybody needs to understand that message. What we're trying to do, and they need every action they have, should be rowing that boat as you've done. You gave a great illustration, but some folks are not. They've got issues that we've got to deal with that are, it's, it's very heavy. And it's going to stop us if we don't, if we don't get morale down. We don't, you know? And your morale, then. And I hope you took some time to beat your wife over the weekend. Yes, sir, okay. She didn't talk to me before this meeting either. Yeah. But we need to do that, and everybody needs to do that. They need to have a healthy balance on things so we can move forward. We can get there, but we can't hurt ourselves while we're doing it.
He did leave work at 3:00 Sunday.
Good, Sunday.
I'm not kidding, that's Sunday.
Well, so, so you, what you have, I'll just, well, I don't want to say. You, you're a little bit out of balance. That's just a friend talking.
Understand.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
I'm moving on.
Bridget?
I just want to say what makes me so excited and what makes me, which I just, seeing all the recognition and it's like awards that are being presented here. And just all the effort going into the school environment and community environment. I think that's one of the most important things about other communities, is just making sure that everybody wants to be participating. We saw that in the, like, that 330 students out of 338 showing up to the page free, it's crazy. And the 400 Row the Boat Awards and all the internships. And it's just so exciting, and I know the students love it. Thanks to all the staff that have contributed or.
Can I really all turn about what's going on instead of mentioning all the opportunities that students are having? To me, they're really the ones coming to school. There's no other good, it's just incentive and all that stuff. And just be, activities are happening. Last year, SUT Lake and Page moved down. The winter fence melted down. And just like seeing how excited those kids are and they're doing really great. So it's really nice to see.
All right. Yeah, so I remember saying early in the beginning of the year, we were talking about, you know, positivity and how good things were going. I'm like, let's keep it going, let's, let's hold on to that. And we are. I think that that boat is continuing to row. The water might be a little bit more rough. It might be hitting some like rapids, often rapids. I think it's, you know, we're still, we're still moving. And I am a very positive person, or at least I try to be. But I'm also someone that I cannot fake it if I'm not feeling it. And my heart is very, very, very happy today. I took four days to myself over the weekend and thought I was doing myself a favor. And I came back and it was like, all right, I need another vacation. Because it's just been one thing after another. But I'm very grateful because I know I've, rest assured that we have a staff that works tirelessly. And maybe sometimes, you know, a lot, you know? I get it because the passion is there and the compassion is there and the dedication is there. But as we saw, it is, you know, bullying awareness month. And, you know, those things, it doesn't, as Dr. Huber said, it doesn't need to be a month. Because people need to realize that when we bully and we harm other people, there is a ripple effect, no matter what we do. And it is hurting people, not just today, not just tomorrow, but for the rest of their lives sometimes. And so I would like to see us, I know, like with chronic absenteeism, we have created a whole culture and movement and effort around addressing absenteeism. And I really want us to do that around stopping bullying and around kindness and compassion. And what our staff does every single day, I want us to continue to model that to students and community and the world. Yeah, so that's all I've got, but keep, keep rowing. Keep rowing.
Sure. I, yeah, I just echo everything everybody said. I do want to thank Dr. Huber and your staff for being willing to get trained and to know how first aid it is. A wonderful curriculum, and it does show, you know, I work close with Northwestern, and not every school division allocated people to do that. So it says something that our school division sees as important and that is something we're going to offer to, I think, all of our freshmen. And it's hopefully going to help change some of that culture. So, so I think I'm grateful that, that we're in a division that sees the need for that. I also want to thank you, we have the RAM clinic at the end of September. A lot of people in here came to help with that. There was a lot of support through the schools, through that clinic in partnership with a lot of community partners, but the Page Free Clinic, we serve over 317 people, and they received over $250,000 in free medical dentistry.
Wow.
So that's a service that has, I think, been offered now five years, since we're 50 years. And it's a much-needed service in our community. And we really couldn't do it without the support and school system and a lot of people that were in here and outside of school. So I just want to thank you for that. And you see the need in the community and, and stuff. That is definitely always appreciated.
I'll say one more thing before I adjourn. One positive thing, I mean, is the Carisalis. I think it's amazing that we have that. But what was kind of concerning to me, so we had 361 communications, eight total cases and four appointments. That means our kids are asking for help, but they're not taking it. So I think that's something I would like for us, you know, to be able to look at is where is that gap? Where is that, that breakdown? Why aren't we making, you know? On that, I'm making a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.